Good afternoon. I'd like to call the June 18th meeting of the Santa Fe County Planning Commission to Order. May I have a roll call vote? A roll call, please?
Mr. Pava?
Here.
Mr. Pava?
Present.
Here.
Here. Thank you very much. Let's please all rise for a pledge of allegiance. The next item is approval of the agenda. Staff, are there any amendments to the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Item F is going to be moved up and be presented first due to some scheduling issues. That is the La Bahada project from our planning division.
Thank you very much. May I get a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Thank you, Commissioner. May I get a second?
A second.
Thank you. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Thanks. The next item is approval of the meeting minutes. May I get a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll move to approve the minutes from the previous meeting. Another excellent job.
Thank you. And may I get a second?
A second.
Thank you. I have a few edits that we may want to consider. On page 17, instead of member Trujillo, it says CY. And on page 25, it says that I asked someone to please lift the mice up, and I think that should be Mike. And so, all those in favor of approving the agenda as corrected, I'm sorry, the minutes as corrected, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Thank you. The next item is, and so are we going to move F to the top above the miscellaneous? Okay.
Mr. Chair, no. F will be above A. So you could go along with miscellaneous and then consent.
Okay. The next item is a final order on case number 24-5170, Angelo Abeta. May I get a motion to approve this item? Thank you, Commissioner Pava. May I get a second?
I'll second then.
Thank you, Commissioner De La Cruz. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. The next item is the consent agenda, the case 24-5250, James and Jeanette Wood variants. May I get a motion to approve that item, the final order on that? Thank you, Commissioner Bruger. May I get a second? Thank you, Commissioner Pava. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion passes. New business. With the amended agenda, we are first going to be hearing what was listed as item F, the 2025 Village of La Bahada Community Plan, recommendation for approval of the 2025 Village of La Bahada Community Plan for adoption by the BCC. Joseph? And please lift the mice up. No, that's a joke.
You have the presentation? The presentation?
Good evening, Chair, Commissioners. I will have a presentation shortly, but Earth Management staff, Planning Division are recommending the approval of the 2025 Village of La Bahada Community Plan for adoption by the Board of County Commissioners. Go back here. So I will give a brief presentation about just giving a little more context for the community plan. So, the Village of La Bahada is a rural, unincorporated community located in Santa Fe County within Commission District III. So you can see here, it is in the southwestern portion of this frame, but it's westernmost portion of the county. portion of the county. The village lies entirely within the boundaries of Pobl de Cochati. The Santa Fe River flows through La Bahada. La Bahada is the last settlement that the river flows through before reaching Cochati Lake. With a small Titan Head population of approximately 26 residents, the village is characterized by its historic Asekiya's agricultural traditions, scenic landscapes. The community's planning efforts aim to balance preservation of its rural identity with sustainable growth and infrastructure improvements. In April of 2017, the Village of La Bahada Community Association submitted a letter of intent to request authorization to initiate the community planning process. The S L D C Section 2.1.4 states that community plans are intended to permit communities to recommend adoption of particular land use regulations based on the need and goals of the community and to subsequently update plans as necessary due to changing circumstances. The Board of County Commissioners established a planning committee and authorized the community planning process for the La Bahada Community District via Resolution 2017-55. La Bahada Planning Committee is coordinated through the County Planning Division in accordance with the S L D C, and participation on the planning committee was open to all community members throughout the process. Notification was sent to property owners at the planning initiation phase, midway point, and to inform property owners of the community-wide meetings to review and provide public comments on the draft plan. Village of La Bahada Planning Committee comprises members of, is comprised of members from La Bahada landowners, residents, community stakeholders, as well as the La Bahada Community Ditch and Mutual Domestics Association. They first met on Saturday, July 15th, 2017, and have met relatively frequently up until 2020, when meetings were moved remotely due to the COVID-19 pandemic. And in 2024, meetings resumed in person in the Village of La Bahada as well as the county administrative complex. The community planning meetings were open for public participation throughout the process, and new members were always welcome. So just to get into the plan a little bit, it's comprised of three sections, the introduction, the planned elements as outlined in the S G M P, and the implementation and goals. Before getting into it, here's a view of the existing land use map and the future land use map. This outlines the existing land use and the parcel data to the left, and then to the right is the future land use with that data and the proposed overlays that will be further expanded upon when we develop the La Bahada Community District overlay. You see a rural commercial overlay to the northeast and an agricultural overlay to the So for the introduction, it establishes the who, what, where, and how of this process, who is affected, who is responsible for doing what? What is this plan? What does it entail? Where? Where does the county lie in all of this? And what is, where does La Bahada's geography play into some of these land use decisions? And how does this community plan impact the future of La Bahada? This section also gives specific attention to the historic context of the village dating back to its Spanish colonial settlement with the La Mahada grant, as well as provides some demographic information. The planned elements, this is in coordination with the S G M P, the land use element, economic development, agricultural and ranching. All of these elements consist of the existing conditions and concerns or opportunities related to each element. At the end of each section, for each element, we have the goals, strategies, and actions that are then compiled in the third section, so you can see them all together. And these goal, strategies, and actions attempt to address how, the concerns and opportunities, so ways in which that those could be, those could be addressed, supported by different actors. Again, identifying who will carry out each strategy and just those roles and responsibilities. So some of the key issues and solutions that were identified by the community, one of the first, and perhaps the most important to the community, would be the verification of the community boundaries via a cadastral survey. This is not something the county could do, obviously, but this is something that the community has expressed interest in petitioning the Secretary of the Interior to perform a cadastral survey, as outlined in Public Law 98344, I believe it was. And this kind of supports some of the other issues and solutions that they've identified, particularly related to infrastructure and access, the maintenance and improvement of the rural roadways. La Bahada Road was granted, it was an easement granted by Pobl de Cochati in 1983. So there is that, that it's their single mode of ingress and egress to the community, and so there are obviously a number of issues that could arise from that. The secondary access point used to be Route 66, the historic Route 66. However, that is often closed to the public by Pobl de Cochati. Agriculture and food security, protecting farmland is very important to this community. It's a traditional historic community, and they have traditional agricultural practices, they have Asekiya. And so, the goal to protect farmland could be addressed through a rural agricultural overlay zone, which again will be detailed further in the La Bahada Community District overlay. It was also of importance to establish a weekly farmer's market, not only to serve the Village of La Bahada, but as well as the regional food producers at Pobl de Cochati or Penya Blanca or Cochati Lake. And then, that kind of bleeds into the economic and community development, the establishment of a small central placita that could serve as a community center slash food processing facility to stimulate local food production and processing. There's an existing structure within La Bahada that a community member owns that would like to convert that into a community center slash food processing facility, again for the region, not just for La Bahada. And to promote village-scale commercial ventures through the rural commercial overlay. Again, this would be kind of, you'd go into greater detail when we would develop this overlay at a later point upon the adoption by the BCC, the eventual adoption. And then to promote eco and agritourism in the community. And perhaps the most achievable, or at least the quickest to achieve, would be the expansion of broadband access through partnerships and providers and grant programs. And so, just a quick synopsis of what we've done so far. We reviewed the plan for consistency with the S G M P and determined the consistency by the land use administrator that has been complete. It's complete in May. Two public meetings with the community, one was in November and the other was last month. Those have been complete, and this is the first of the two public hearings. So pending your recommendation, it will then go to BCC in early July. And so with that, we request recommendation for approval to the BCC of the 2025 Village of La Bahada Community Plan. Can I stand for any questions or comments you may have?
Thank you very much. Commissioners, do you have any questions of staff? Commissioner Pava?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to say to staff that I saved this for last in the review of our cases, thinking it would be the best and most interesting item, and it certainly bears fruit. I am very impressed. Some of you know that I'm a recovering retired planner. I've done these things. And I must say that, and I was just told this was all done in-house. I'm very impressed, and keep up the good work. I learned a lot about the village, the historic village. On my way to Cochati a couple times, I've stopped by and wondered more about it. Not many planning commissions and commissioners get to see something with documents that go back to almost 400 years, and that's one of the delights of working with you all at Santa Fe County and being here in Nuevo Mexico. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other comments or questions from staff, from Commissioners? Commissioner Bruger?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Few questions. So you mentioned if this is approved, there would be an overlay district that would be created, in fact, one or several within one. So who would be doing that?
We would be doing it, planning staff would be doing that with the community, with the planning, the La Bahada Planning Committee. It would be several overlays within a broader community overlay.
Thank you. So as Commissioner Pava said, this is an impressive document, and you have, the implementation measures are very clear and detailed. Question is, you have an estimated cost to the county of what would be entailed in implementing these measures?
Thank you for the question, Commissioner. We do not have any figures, as, you know, perhaps we should delve a bit more into that. But, you know, one thing that we tried to do with the goal, strategies, and actions is, you know, some of the things are not to be done by the county. Some of the things will be done by community members specifically, or the planning committee specifically, petitioning different institutions, or it should be like an intergovernmental effort, really. And, so yeah, I think that, you know, some of the things can be raised via ICIP funds or whatever you may, whatever it may be. But things like the community center that we've talked about, if it is a county-run community center, then the county would have to own that community center. And so we haven't really discussed any figures yet, but...
Maybe something to consider for you. The other question, when you do the, this community plan, then do you have, part of your internal planning committee, do you have folks from Public Works, Finance even plugged into this? So some of your recommendations are having to do with access in and out of the area. So has, for instance, Public Works been plugged into this effort?
Public Works has not specifically. We tried to do a bit more intra-departmental coordination. Economic development was a big part of this. And so, you know, that's not our expertise, and so we pushed it across the hall to the folks in community development, and they offered some really helpful feedback. We have, you know, the water and wastewater element, we have a water planner on staff, and so he had eyes on that, and we have a, at the time, a transportation planner, now we just hired a new one, and they had some really helpful feedback on the transportation element. But yeah, it would be really helpful, especially in terms of implementation, bringing in the people who would be, you know, on the ground. Thank you.
Thank you. And one last comment. If this does get approved and then the overlay district gets approved, there may be in the future a case or two that comes up within the overlay district, as happens in other overlay districts, such as, we have a case tonight that's in an overlay district last month as well. And a point, comment was made during last meeting that it'd be, it'd be good, either from a planning committee or staff, that, you know, some, when a case comes up, that comment on how the particular case, current planning staff does it, but that, you know, long-range planning staff would be able to weigh in on that as authors of the overlay district as well, and, or at least be in attendance at a case. So that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other Commissioners have questions of Joseph?
I've got a question. I believe in your introduction, you indicated that there were 26 residents or properties within the district. About what kind of attendance, what kind of participation was there from stakeholders, members of the community in this process?
Percentage-wise, it was a record, record number of participants.
It's a small denominator?
Yeah, yeah. You know, I was not there during the entirety of the process. I was hired a little over a year ago, but since then, it's been about 10 to 15 people.
That is, that is significant percentage. I appreciate that. The other question I have is, the rural commercial overlay district in the northeast part of the, of the overlay, it indicates that agritourism might be an intended goal. We've seen a large number of cases that have come before us for short-term housing, and I'm wondering if, in your time working in this, if that topic has ever come up? Because frequently, there is opposition from folks in the surroundings that everything used to be great until Airbnb opened up, kind of, kind of comments. And so I'm wondering if there were any discussions about that topic, or is the agritourism slightly different focus? Thanks.
Thank you for your question, Chair. Yeah, there has been some discussion, from what I recall, not so much about short-term rentals in terms of Airbnbs, but short-term rentals in terms of like work-stay programs. So more of like the Italian model of the agriturismo. So there has been some discussion of that.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any other questions? Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Are there any members in the audience, or possibly online, who are interested in speaking on this topic? If so, please come up and... Okay, I'll, anybody, anybody online? No?
Mr. Chair, there's nobody online wishing to speak on this case.
Thank you very much, Dominic. Any other comments or questions from staff? If not, what's the will of the commission?
I make a motion to approve.
Thanks, Commissioner Meyer. Is there a second? Commissioner Pava, seconds? May we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes.
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 Yes. Thank you very much. Appreciate it, Joseph. Thank you. The next item is back to A on the agenda, which is case 25-5100, Bruce and Deborah McAllister, conditional use permit to build a garage. Dominic?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, Commission members. Bruce and Deborah McAllister, conditional use permit. Bruce and Deborah McAllister applicants and owners request approval of a CUP to allow the use of an accessory dwelling unit. The 1.787 acre site is zoned residential community within the community overlay district of Tassukee. The site is located at 1473 Bishop's Lodge Road, Commission District 1, SDA 2. The applicant are proposing to build an accessory dwelling unit with an attached garage and workshop. The applicant is requesting approval of a conditional use permit for an ADU. The proposed ADU will have an attached two-car garage and workshop. The proposed roof square footage of the structure would be approximately 1,183 square feet. Of the total 1,183... of the structure would be approximately 1,183 square feet. Of the total 1,183 square feet, 456 square feet would be heated space for the ADU. The use of the structure will be for the family and friends, when they visit over holidays, to allow these guests to have their own personal space. The proposed attached garage and workshop will also be for personal use. The subject property is zoned residential community within the Community Overlay District of Tuskegee, Chapter 9, Section 9.5. This zoning allows for an accessory dwelling unit as a conditional use through, throughout the zoning district. The applicant states, "The only existing structure on the property are the main residence, a child playhouse, and a pergola that is attached to the house. Access will be off of Bishop's Lodge Road. Staff has identified that there is an existing accessory structure slash storage shed, but that structure will be demolished and replaced with the accessory dwelling unit." On September 19th, 2024, as required by Table 4-1, Section 4.4.3, the applicant presented the proposed CUP to the Technical Advisory Committee at the regular scheduled bimonthly meeting. On November 16th, 2024, as required by Table 4-1 and Section 4.4.4 of the SLDC, the applicant conducted a pre-application neighborhood meeting on the CUP. The applicant notified surrounding property owners, and one individual attended the meeting. The applicant presented the history of the development and presented a detailed of the proposal of the CUP in the meeting. Notice requirements were met as per SLDC Section 4.6.3, general notice of the application requiring a public hearing. In advance of the hearing on the application, the applicant provided an affidavit of posting of notice of the hearing confirming that the public notice posting regarding the application was made for 15 days on the property, beginning on April 23rd, 2025. Additionally, notice of the hearing was published in the Santa Fe New Mexican on April 23rd, 2025, as evidenced by a copy of that notice contained in the record. Notice of the hearing was sent to the owners of the land within 500 feet of the subject property, as well as the pertinent CEOs and ROs, and a list of persons sent mailings is contained in the record. Building and Development Services staff has reviewed this project for compliance with the pertinent SLDC requirements, and has found that the facts presented support the request for a conditional use permit to allow an ADU. The use is compliance with the current development within the affected zoning district. The use will not impact adjacent land uses, and the applicant satisfies the seminal requirements set forth in the SLDC inclusive of the conditional use criteria set forth in Chapter 4, Section 4.9.6.5. Review comments from Santa Fe County Fire and review comments from county staff have established findings that the application to allow an accessory dwelling unit is in compliance with the SLDC, including the pertinent design standards. The hearing officer heard this case on May 8th, 2025. At the hearing, no people spoke in support of the case, and no people spoke against the case. The hearing officer memorialized findings of fact and conclusion of law in a recommended order on this request. The recommendation of the hearing officer and staff is recommendation for approval of a conditional use permit to allow an accessory dwelling unit, subject to the following conditions. If the planning commission votes to approve a conditional use permit to allow an accessory dwelling unit, staff recommends the following conditions. Mr. Chair, may I enter these conditions into the record?
Yes, please do.
This report and exhibits listed below are hereby submitted as part of the hearing record. I stand for any questions.
Thank you very much, Dominic. Commissioners, are there any questions of staff? Commissioner Pava?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Cisneros, the 456-square-feet component, that's the living quarters in the ADU, proposed ADU, how does that, percentage-wise, match up to the principal residence? In terms of the percentages, is it close to 25%? Or is it, just curious. The garage doesn't count.
Correct. So the existing residence, I don't believe I have the exact square footage, but it does meet the standards set forth as the requirements for an accessory dwelling unit. The applicants are present. They may be able to answer the actual heated square footage of the primary residence, but staff has verified it does meet the requirements of an accessory dwelling unit.
Well, thank you. And then, just to clarify for the record, there will be a new septic tank system on the property, replacing what's there currently, and both the ADU and the existing residence will be served using that.
That is correct. The existing septic will be replaced by a newer, bigger system that has been approved by NMED, and both the single-family residence and the ADU will both share that septic.
Thank you. That's all my questions.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other questions from Commissioner Bruger?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Cisneros, does, does the existing house have a garage or carport right now?
No, the existing residence does not have a garage or a carport.
Okay. And this might be something that would be better asked of the applicant? But then, what's, who's going to use the garage that would be built?
So the garage and the workshop that's going to be built, the applicant can answer to that, but they have indicated that it's all going to be used for personal use, as well as the ADU for personal use for family and friends. There's no indication and no intent for that ADU to be used as a short-term rental.
Yeah, thank you. The, this is too bad that the community planning folks left the room. This might have been a question for them, but, well, you're standing up there, so I'll ask you. So there's only two overlay districts that where accessory dwelling units are not approved by right, I think, here in Madrid. So why, the question is why? Why is that?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, Commission members. So yes, the Tuskegee Overlay and the Madrid Overlay are the two overlay districts that do require a conditional use permit for accessory dwelling units. The Tuskegee Overlay did have a rewrite or an amendment just about a year ago, that was brought up by the, you know, to the community if they wished to remove that restriction, and the community wished to remain to have that restriction on there. They changed other things, such as setbacks for walls, wall heights, and overall heights for structures, but they remained to, decided to leave the restriction of a conditional use permit for an accessory dwelling unit.
Okay. Thank you. And last question, as, if this were to be approved, would there be any additional landscaping put in, or not?
There's no requirements. There's natural buffering and screening on the property, so it meets the requirements for landscape and buffering. So there's no requirement for additional landscaping. If the applicant decides that they, you know, wish to, you know, further landscape the property, that would be up to them.
Kind of like building code sets a minimum, and you can meet it or go beyond.
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other commissioners have questions of staff? Commissioner Cruz Crawford?
Yeah, I'll just follow up with that question I just mentioned, as far as just the square footage, meaning the square footage requirements for the ADU. I'm assuming staff has reviewed this, and it also meets height requirements and all the other typical ADU requirements, if, that are on the code?
That is correct, yes. The heated square footage, although I don't have the exact existing square footage of the single-family residence, it has been verified and confirmed. It does meet the 50% requirement of the heated square footage of the main residence, and it's below 1,400 square feet, so it meets both those requirements. It's meeting the requirements of utilities, as it's going to share both the septic, the well, and electric as well. And it is subordinate in height to the primary residence as well.
I believe the height for the ADU is 14 feet, is that correct? Or what is it I forget for the ADUs?
So the height restriction for the Tuskegee Overlay is, has gone back to 24 feet, where previously it was, I believe it was 20 feet. But that had just been changed about a year ago, in the amendment for the Tuskegee Overlay Community District. But it is 24 feet.
Now, a follow-up though, because I believe for the ADUs under the SLDC, there's a lower height restriction, correct? And what is that?
That is, so what the SLDC states is that the height, it should not be taller than the primary residence. It's to look subordinate as, to the primary residence, so it will be below the height of the primary residence.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questioners? Any other questions? I have, I have a question. Mr. Cisneros, although the McAllisters are not interested in using the ADU as a short-term rental, perhaps future owners of the property may be. And so, nothing in the approval would limit that ability of potential future owners to go through the process to, to put a short-term rental in this ADU. Is that correct?
Mr. Chair, that is correct.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any other questions? This, thank you very much. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone either here or online who's interested in speaking? The applicant, I'm sorry, is the applicant here, and would, do you wish to make a presentation? Thank you.
Good afternoon. Thanks for your time. I'm Deborah McAllister. Deborah McAllister, 1473 Bishop's Lodge Road, Santa Fe. I just wanted to clarify the square footage of the main house, since that was a question. We have just under 2,800 square feet. And also, the reason that there is not a garage attached to the primary residence is just the limitations of the lot. We have septic systems and wells in a narrow lot. So really, our only choice was to do a detached garage. And we realized we had complications with moving a septic tank without, if we're going through all this trouble, why not make this small unit where the kids could stay when they come, keep the daughter-in-laws happy, they have their own shower? So that's really our purpose. And the lot's really, is really too tight to accommodate a whole lot of vehicles, a whole lot of people. If anyone ever wanted to use that as a rental property, I think they would have, they would change their mind. It's just, it's just a tight lot. So, that answers your questions?
Thanks very much. I, I appreciate the, what the designer has done with this, with this plan. So the way I see it, on the, on the developer plans, I think, it seems that there are walls surrounding, are those new walls, or are those existing fences or walls surrounding the?
They, some were existing, some, they've just developed, we've been there almost 40 years. So, you know, they've just have kind of developed over time. For the most part, they were existing.
And there currently is some fence or wall along Bishop's Lodge? Is that right?
Yes. It's about a four-foot-high wall, 42 inches maybe. And we need, we do need to modify that a bit, to keep the fire department happy. We are going to be moving part of the wall, so that there's clear access for their vehicles.
Right. Okay. Any, any questions from commissioners for the applicant? Commissioner Bruger?
Mr. Chair, so Ms. McAllister, throughout the written application presentation, that it was, mentioned numerous times that the accessory dwelling unit would be for, for use by family.
Right.
So, that is, and I would like to follow up on this a bit, the use, because the, at least, the approval criteria that we have to go through to recommend approval of conditional use permit, it, it does directly or indirectly speak to the use of this. So, following up on Mr. Chair's comments on short-term rental, then, just to ask you point-blank, do you anticipate using this accessory dwelling unit for a short-term rental?
Not in our lifetimes. No, I don't. Yeah. We have, we have two adult sons who were both born in Santa Fe, and they have moved to other parts of the country. They're married. One of them has a little grandson, he's three, and it's really for their use, and it may be just a few weeks out of the year. And then, the garage will be nice for us to get out from under the dripping elm trees, and out of the weather, so.
That's on the record, and I'm satisfied. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions from any commissioners? Thank you very much, Ms. McAllister.
Thanks for your time.
So now, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone here or online who is interested in speaking, either for or against this proposal?
Mr. Chair, there is no one online wishing to speak on this item.
Okay, so the public hearing portion is now closed. Commissioners, what's your wish?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Commissioner. May I get a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Commissioner. Can you get a roll call vote, please?
Can you clarify if that is subject to staff's proposed conditions?
Yes, let's clarify that your motion and second are all inclusive of the staff's conditions of approval?
Yes. I meant to include staff's inclusions.
And yes, my second.
Thank you very much, and thank you, Roger.
Yes.
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 Yes. Thank you very much. The next item is case number 25-5060, Michael Ray Martin and Balen Schwartz, variance request. Ms. Martinez?
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. Marie Martinez, Building and Development Review Specialist with the Growth Management Division. Case number 25-5060, variance. Issue: Michael Ray Martin and Balen Schwartz, applicant. Abby Goodtree of Glorietta Geoscience Consultant Agent is requesting a variance of Chapter 10.4.2.4, to allow the proposed accessory dwelling unit to utilize its own liquid waste disposal system. The property lies within the rural residential zoning district. The property is located at 128 Cloudstone Drive, within Township 16 North, Range 10 East, Section 5, SDA 2, Commission District 4, parcel number 23399211. The applicants purchased the property in 1988, with a principal residence and an accessory structure on it, here now known as the ATF, accessory dwelling unit, ADU. The applicants added an additional enclosure to the garage area approximately 20 years ago, while renovating the property. But the addition has not been used as a housing unit at any point. The four-bedroom house at 128 Cloudstone Drive is already served by an onsite liquid waste system, but connecting the ATF/ADU liquid waste system stream to the system would have been infeasible due to the geological and topographical conditions of the property. The principal residence and the ATF, after the fact, ADU currently have their own septic tanks and leach fields. The applicants received approval from the New Mexico Environment Department for the second onsite liquid waste system for the ADU on February 23rd, 2022. After inspection by NMED, they were granted a permit to operate on September 6, 2024, and were issued permit number LW0005479. Therefore, the applicants are requested... Therefore, the applicants are requesting a variance of Chapter 10, Section 10.4.2.4 of the SLDC to operate a second liquid waste system on the property to serve the ADU. The applicant has addressed the variance criteria as outlined in the memo. Building and Development Services staff has reviewed this report, this request for compliance with pertinent, pertinent SLDC requirements, and has found that the facts presented support the request for the variance. Hearing officer recommendations. On May 8, 2025, this request was presented to the Sustainable Land Development Hearing Officer. The Hearing Officer memorialized findings of facts and conclusion of law in a recommended order on this request. The Hearing Officer, based on the evidence presented, recommended approval of the applicant's variance with the conditions proposed by staff. The written order and the minutes of May 8, 2025 hearing are attached as exhibits J and K. Recommendation: Staff recommendation is for approval of the request for variance to allow a separate system, septic system on, to the ADU due to terrain constraints subject to the conditions. If the Santa Fe County Planning Commission finds that the application has met the variance criteria and recommends approval of the variance, staff recommends the following conditions be imposed. Mr. Chair, Commissioners, may I enter these conditions into the record?
Yes, please do.
This report and the exhibits listed below are hereby submitted as part of their hearing record. Thank you, and at this time, I stand for any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez. Commissioners, do you have any questions of staff? Commissioner Bruger?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Martinez, I, I thought I read somewhere in the material, initially, that a variance for the garage may be needed? Is that, is that not, or there's no variance needed for the garage?
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, no.
Mr. Chair, Commission members, so originally, when this came to our technical advisory committee meeting, staff had identified that the existing structure did meet setback, but with the addition of the ADU, staff felt that it was a change of use and thought that it would need a variance for setback. But going back and discussing it with, with legal and discussing it with other staff members, we determined that that was not actually necessary and not necessarily the right portion of the code that we were determining that on.
Thank you. If I could follow up on that, that'd be a question for legal. Why is that, then, if a use changes? It may not be in this situation, but there's a difference between garage, where there'd be no human activity, at least for the most part, unless you're working on your car, and an accessory dwelling unit. Why, why wouldn't a change in use matter?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Bruger, just to clarify, the change of use would be changing it from a commercial to a residential or vice versa. Being that this is residential, strictly residential, and it's a residential accessory to the primary dwelling, there's no change in the use.
Okay, thank you. The, is, in all of the material that I reviewed, there was, there was a lot of explanation as far as why it was problematic to create, to not use the existing leach field. That was, that was very clear. What I did not see in any of the information was why is the accessory dwelling unit being proposed, and what use would be, what would it be used for? Was there something that's not in the material? I'll, I'll ask the question in the future, because I, I still think the use of the accessory dwelling unit matters in the satisfaction of the criteria that we have to use to prove this or not.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, that would be a question for either the agent or the property owner, because I doubt, I'm not sure what it is, if it was for family or, I don't think it was for short-term rental, but you, we can ask that question.
Thank you, I, I intend to. The, the last question I have is more of a general one, but there'd be a, there was a, I think a condition that the applicant shall obtain an after-the-fact permit for the, for the conversion. It, conversion hasn't been done yet, right?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Bruger, it has been started, it hasn't been completed. So therefore, they will need the after-the-fact permitting.
So, if I may ask, what, what kept the applicant from not moving forward once they started?
Mr. Chair, I think, Commissioner Bruger, I think that's a question appropriate for the applicant.
That makes two, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Martinez, any other questions? Commissioner La Cruz, La Cruz Crawford?
Yeah, I'm just trying to wrap my head around, I guess, timeline-wise, could you explain again, like, because there's an after-the-fact permit, there's an addition that I guess, like I said, is already under construction, a septic tank that was installed at, I think, 2020, I forget what it was here, I can read here, 2024, I believe? But if you could just break down the timeline, because I'm just trying to understand that as far as like, okay, when did, you know, there's already existing accessory structure in place, and then some sort of addition occurred, and when did the septic, the new septic system get installed? Just to kind of get an idea of the timeline.
Mr. Chair, if I may answer, Ms. De La Cruz Crawford. Originally, this came in for residents in a studio, and during the time, it, we didn't have the guidelines that require it to be connected to the same septic system. So, NMED granted him that septic system for that studio. Therefore, thereafter, they decided they wanted to convert it into the ADU and began the process. From my, my understanding to answer a question that was asked earlier, is that they were unaware that they needed a permit, and one of their clients told them, you should probably obtain a permit. They came in to obtain that permit and found out that they could no longer convert the ADU with a separate septic system due to our new guidelines. Therefore, they're here before you for that variance. That's kind of how it broke down.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from commissioners? Thank you very much, Ms. Martinez.
Thank you.
Is the applicant or their agent here? Are you interested in making a presentation or answering questions? Thank you.
It's Abby Goodry, 1723 Second Street, Santa Fe, New Mexico, 87505. Thank you. Commissioner Bruger, thank you for your questions, I just wanted to answer some of those for you.
Please lift the mic, thank you.
So, your first question was about the use of the ADU. So, as far as I know from my client, I am the agent representing my client, as far as I know from my client, they are not allowed to use it as a short-term rental in their current neighborhood, so they will only be using it for family and friends as, just like how the person before us described using theirs, it's going to be the same use. And then, your second question was about why they stopped construction on the ADU. So what they did was basically just created a room, it's just an empty room, and they haven't fully finished making it into a casita, if you will, for financial reasons.
Do you have anything else you'd like to say, or just want to respond to questions?
I, I don't have anything else that I'd like to say, except thank you all for your time, I really appreciate it.
Thanks. Commissioners, Commissioner Pava?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Goodry, I think you wrote the, the report describing the geology and the hydrology. For the record, could you explain, because I think that truly are extenuating circumstances here, given the location of this, although it must have a nice view of Harry's through the trees. Tell us a little bit about, about the peculiarities, why this is different than, say, down where I live on, in Barrio La Canada, along the river, you know, which is just sand and silt and stuff like that.
Absolutely. So, this property is up in the foothills, you know, looking towards the Sangre's, and there is a large geologic outcrop of granite in the middle of the property, so it makes it very difficult to pipe anything subsurface from, you know, the ADU to the primary residence septic. So, in addition to that, the existing septic leach field for the primary residence was unable to be expanded in surface area, so we didn't want to risk any overloading to that system, because there is a drop-off into, in Arroyo, a drainage into another property, and then, you know, several other circumstances like the, the outcrop that I discussed, and then also the house is on one side. So, it just wasn't able to be expanded in terms of surface area, so just to utilize as many natural resources as we could, we decided to use this lovely patch of dirt that's right by the ADU for its own septic and natural filtration of septic waste.
Yeah, I just wanted to get that into the record. It's a very bad pun, but we don't want to take the underlying topography for granite, unless it is, right?
Absolutely, yes.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other questions of commissioners?
Just, yeah.
Commissioner?
Just out of curiosity, because I looked in at the site plan, so there's the garage, and I understand that there was some sort of addition to that, maybe a portal or something like that, because I know there's the garage and the ADU, so I'm just curious, what part of that addition was, was the after-the-fact portion? Was a portion of that roofline of the ADU already, a portal that was being covered in? Or was, I'm just kind of curious about that.
I believe, I'm not certain about this, but I believe that originally, it was just a garage, and then they added, on the south side of that garage, an additional room, basically. So it was not there before, and they built it, and now they're requesting after-the-fact variance use for the septic, for that bathroom.
Any other questions? Commissioner Bruger?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Ms. Goodry, for your presentation. Sometimes I have a little trouble hearing if you don't speak right on the mic, although I appreciate the, so, just to follow up on Commissioner La Cruz Crawford's comment, after-the-fact permit, the, it's, so, you, do you have a permit in, does your client have a permit in to Construction Industries at this point?
That would be a question of my client.
May I ask, why, why is that?
Let's have the witness approach. Yeah, if you could be sworn and repeat the question, and your answer is after you're sworn, sir. Thank you very much.
I do. Michael Ray Martin.
Redress.
128 Cloudstone, Santa Fe, New Mexico.
Commissioner Bruger, can you?
Sure.
Repeat the question, thank you.
My question was, sir, do you have a permit in to Construction Industries at this point, given that you began construction already? I assume that we're following the protocol with this permit, and then whatever other permits we need. It's, and the question that, maybe I wasn't paying sufficient attention when Commissioner asked the question, but, so what, what improvements did you, are currently in place? Mainly electrical and plumbing. Okay, so are they exposed? Yes. It's always mystifying to me, after, after the fact permit, Construction Industries comes out, and I've done a lot of jobs, and usually they, they don't have a lot of time to spend on a site, so if the sheetrock's already in, I don't know if they put some holes in it or take it down, it's, it's, it's an issue. So, at least it's exposed. Thank you. So let me ask you, then, for what purpose are you creating the accessory dwelling unit? Mainly as a man cave, family, friends, pool table primarily. You intend to use it as a short-term rental? I cannot. My association won't allow me to rent it out. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Bruger, just to clarify, I do want to let you know that the applicant did come in to apply, to come into compliance, to apply for a development permit, but they were notified that they had an incomplete submittal because of the need of the variance. Therefore, they did not get a development permit issued, therefore, they did not go on to CID to get an actual building permit. That's going to be a condition of approval, if they get approved for the variance, that they do need to come in and get after-the-fact development permit, and then go on to CID for actual building permits.
Thank you very much. So this is a public hearing, is there anyone in the audience or online who is interested in speaking either in support of or opposition to this application? No one in the room? Anyone online?
Mr. Chair, there is nobody online wishing to speak on this case.
Thank you very much, the public hearing portion is now closed. What's the will of the commission?
I would motion, Mr. Chair, I would, after hearing this testimony, I would motion, make a motion for approval of case 25-5060 variances.
Mr. Chair, is that with?
Does that motion include conditions recommended by staff?
Certainly.
Thank you very much. So there's a, there's a motion for approval with staff conditions, is there a second?
A second.
There's a motion and a second. May we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes.
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 Yes. Thank you very much. Okay, next on the agenda, we have case 25-5010, Javier Juarez, variance, the density request.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. Marie Martinez, Building and Development Review Specialist with the Growth Management Division. Case number 25-5010, variance. Javier Juarez, applicant, Lisa Martinez, agent, requests a variance of density to divide 8.954 acres into seven lots, each containing 1.25 plus or minus. The applicant also requests a second variance of the existing 250-foot setback from NM 599 right-of-way, a third variance of open space. The property is owned residential estates within the Tres Arroyos de Pone community District overlay, which allows one dwelling per two point five acres. The property is located at three Horizon, North Horizon Lane, Township sixteen, North, Range, eight East, Section one, Commission District two. The applicant requests a variance of density to allow the division of eight point nine five four acre parcel into seven one point two five acre lots for a family transfer. Chapter nine, Table nine dash eleven dash two, Dimensional Standards, Tres Arroyos del Poniente, Residential E, illustrates the allowed density at one dwelling unit per two point five acres for this zoning district. The applicant further requests a variance of chapter nine point eleven, point two point one of the two hundred and fifty-foot setback requirement of the Tres Arroyos del Poniente Community District overlay to eliminate the required two hundred and fifty-foot setback. Setbacks are to be regulated per chapter seven point three, Table seven dash A of the SLDC. Furthermore, the applicant requests a variance of chapter nine point eleven, point two point two point three, restricting the utilization of their perimeter of the property as open space. The applicant proposes to utilize the regulated setback per chapter seven point three to meet the required open space. The applicant has addressed the variance criteria as follows. On May eighth, twenty twenty-five, this request was presented to the Sustainable Land Development Hearing Officer. The Hearing Officer memorialized findings of facts and conclusion of law in a recommended order to this request. The Hearing Officer, based on the evidence presented, recommended denial of the applicant's variance of density. The written order and the minutes of May eighth, twenty twenty-five hearing are attached as exhibits M and N. Recommendation. Staff's recommendation is for denial of the request for the variance of density, two hundred and fifty-foot setback requirements, and open space requirements. If the Planning Commission finds the variance criteria has met the recommends and recommends approval of the variance, staff recommends the following conditions be imposed. Mr. Chair and Commissioners, may I enter these conditions into the record?
Yes, you may.
This report and the exhibits listed below are hereby submitted as part of the hearing record. Thank you, and at this time, may I sound for any questions?
Thank you very much, Ms. Martinez. Commissioners, do you have questions of staff? Commissioner Bruger?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Martinez, I noticed on the plat that was included in the presentation, there appears to be no designation of formal open space, either in the form of a dedication or an easement. Is, is that correct?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Member Bruger, that is correct.
Thank you. Like to point out that in the, we were just talking about overlay districts earlier, in your previous presentation. So in this one, in the Tres Arroyos del Poniente Community District Overlay, Section nine in the code, nine point eleven, point two point four, it mentions that the permanent open space may be dedicated to the public or to an open space land trust or other nonprofit management entity, or for common use or to a homeowners' association as an open space easement. So the way I read this code, that if neither a dedication or an easement has been provided, then they would be in violation of that section of the code. That's just a comment.
Commissioner, did you read it as maybe or shall be? I'm sorry.
Maybe, either or, but that if legal wants to correct, I took it as one or the other because otherwise, whatever open space requirement is proposed to be met, is proposed to be met within privately owned property, which appears to be, to be problematic.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Member Bruger, I agree with you. However, open space requirements are major, for major subdivisions such as, you know, a twenty-four lot, sixty lot, that's when we look at dedication for trails, easements and whatnot. That's not to say that they won't need to provide some sort of easement in case the trail does come, and just in case the trail does come through there. However, I think the idea that they were planning on doing is using that twenty-five-foot setback and perimeter setbacks as open space areas.
Thank you, Mr. Lovato. One other question, comment for now. So regarding the setback, so this, Mexico five ninety-nine, that, that's, at least what I remember it to be, that's a WIP route, Waste Isolation Pilot Plant. So I think the feds kicked in fifty percent of it, state kicked in money too, so that the radioactive waste that would come from Los Olamos wouldn't go down St. Francis Drive. So that, so a relief route was built. So with that, it makes sense that there would be a rather large setback from the road in the unlikely event that there was an accident, because accidents happen. So my, my question is, given the, the request to reduce the setback from two hundred and fifty feet to twenty-five feet along this route, does, did the state DOT have to weigh in? I wouldn't presume the feds do, but did they have to weigh in at all on this?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Member Bruger, no, they didn't have to weigh in on this. This is strictly the tap overlay guidelines.
Okay.
If they were proposing access off of the frontage road there, then the state would be weighing in on this issue.
I would think that this issue is a interest, public interest issue. Anyway, that's all my comments, questions for now.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, I did send out some information or a request for information from the NMDOT on February twenty-six, twenty twenty-five, and there was no response.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez. Any other questions from commissioners? Commissioner Pava?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Martinez, I'm looking at the aerial photograph that was provided in the staff report documents. Basically, it shows the proposed, the boundaries of the proposed development along five ninety-nine and then the surrounding area with how the plating currently exists. I noticed that there are at least nine, perhaps ten lots, that would appear to be in the small, maybe one point two five acreage size. One is almost adjacent, lot number ten, and then several are separated by, by the distance of two more lots. There's several along North Horizon Lane and Ravens, but not Ravenswood, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, maybe eight. My point, my question would be is, were those created prior to the adoption of the Sustainable Land Development Code and/or the overlay? And is that why those lots are smaller and they pre-exist both probably the five ninety-nine as, as the WIP highway and the most recent county planning regulations?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner, in the past, we had provisions that allowed for small lot family transfers of one point two five acres. So they were able to go from two point five acres minimum to half the minimum density requirements. Many of these lots were created prior to the two thousand sixteen ordinance and therefore allowed it. The regulations changed since and the minimum requirement is two point five acres per dwelling.
But the lots that I'm mentioning, if you, if you can see where they are on this aerial photograph exhibit, F, looks like it's F, do we know if those were created then through the family subdivision and prior to two thousand sixteen?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Member Pava, that is correct. They were all created prior to two thousand sixteen.
Thank you. I have to say, having worked at the lab all during the time of the development of WIP and whatnot, and these are the southbound lanes, which the vehicles would be coming south through town to avoid St. Francis and the thirteen signals. Commissioner, Steve makes a very good point about concerns there. Is this, is this, are family lot subdivisions still permitted somehow in the code?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Member Pava, they are, but they have to meet minimum lot size requirements.
And minimum lot size requirements vary by the zone and overlay?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Member Pava, that is correct.
Yeah, and in this case, it would be at least two and, two and a half acres, right?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Pava, that is correct.
Yeah. When I look at this, this aerial photograph across the, across the highway, there is a manufactured, maybe it's a mobile home, development. Is that in the city or the counties? Excuse my ignorance.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Member Pava, that is in the city.
That is a city development. Okay. And that's rather dense, but that's not under our jurisdiction. Well, I think that, that's what I wanted to ask. I appreciate your, your time, patience.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner La Cruz Crawford?
Just follow up a little bit on that two hundred and fifty-foot setback requirement, because I'm looking at the aerial map as well here on other properties north of the highway there. Are all those other properties meeting that two hundred and fifty-foot setback? Or what, when also, when was that two hundred and fifty-foot setback in place? Was that at two thousand sixteen or was that prior to that as well?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner de la Cruz, that is correct. They were all done prior to two thousand sixteen and they... There was one particular prop, they all meet that setback, most, majority of them, prior to that. But however, the, there is a variance that was granted on a property with the same required setback that was granted probably several years back during the two thousand sixteen ordinance.
And prior to two thousand sixteen, was there also a two hundred and fifty-foot setback in place?
Mr. Chair, that is correct. The, the ordinance was in place prior to two thousand sixteen and the requirements of two, of this new tap ordinance, when it got, it got amended with this, it incorporated that as well.
Okay, so that two hundred and fifty-foot setback has been in place for a long time, essentially?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Members de la Cruz, I believe so.
Yeah.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other questions of staff? Thank you very much, Ms. Martinez.
Thank you.
Uh, one more. Commissioner Bruger?
So there's a, in the applicant's submittal, they're requesting that the setback in Chapter seven, the blanket setback be used, rather than the setback in the district overlay of two hundred and fifty feet. I, I would think that the district overlay, given that it is, it, it was created as part of a adopted plan and then an adopted overlay and then the code that was placed in here, I would think that that would take precedence over the blanket setback in Section seven. But my question is, does it?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Member Bruger, that is correct. It does set precedent over the original guidelines.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner, and thank you, Ms. Martinez.
Thank you.
Is the applicant or their agent here and they wish to speak?
Yes, they are.
Thank you.
I do. Lisa Martinez, address is thirty-two oh one C Zaffrono Drive, number one eleven, Santa Fe, New Mexico, eight seven five oh seven. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the Planning Commission. Let me begin by thanking you for the opportunity to be able to present our case for variance requests from the requirements of the SLDC. Again, my name is Lisa Martinez and I'm presenting our case today on behalf of Mr. Javier Juarez. He is the current property owner and it's also being presented on behalf of Mr. Gerald and Mrs. Nora Zolano, who are currently under contract to purchase the eight point nine five acre property located at number three, North Horizon Lane. As has been stated, the property is located within the Tres Arroyos del Poniente Community District Overlay and it's known as residential estate or RESE. So on behalf of the applicant, I'm requesting the following three variances that are associated with density, setback, and open space. We are further requesting approval to allow the eight point nine five acre property to be divided into seven one point two five acre lots in the RESE zone that normally mandates only one dwelling per two point five acres. And I'm hopeful that I can answer some of the questions that you've posed earlier. Just to give you a little bit of the project background, going back to September of two thousand twenty-two, Mr. Javier Juarez and his surveyor, the late Mr. Alan Grace, presented to the TAC a request for the division of land, a variance of density, and a variance of setback requirements. Mr. Juarez and Mr. Grace further met with the Land Use Department and other county departments such as water and wastewater within Public Works. They also met with the State of New Mexico Engineering Department for a well permit. Ultimately, they applied and they submitted an application for a ready, willing, enable water and wastewater service application, submitted that to Santa Fe County in June of two thousand twenty-two and it was approved in July of that year. We understand that that has, that approval has since expired. However, a new application was submitted for reapproval and on February fourteenth of two thousand twenty-five, we received a letter stating that the Santa Fe County Utilities Department is ready to provide the proposed development with the services requested. They will grant water service access to a twelve-inch water line, which is at Vista Sewell. It's approximately sixteen hundred and twenty-eight feet from the development location. And in addition, from this same location, there's also a twelve-inch wastewater line that will be made available for a wastewater connection. Our first variance pertaining to density, it's a request of the variance of SLDC Table eight dash ten to allow seven lots, which would consist of approximately one point two five acres, to be created out of the eight point nine five acres. And SLDC Table eight, eight ten illustrates that the density within the RESE zoning is two point five acres. So the applicant's desire is to create these seven lots and as has been described, for the purpose of a family transfer subdivision. The request for this lot size, we did not feel was unusual, as we found many one point two five acre family transfer lots that had been created within the TAPCD and in this general area of the county in the past. If you look at the information that was in the packet, there's a color-coded map that identifies that there are actually thirty-eight lots that are one point two five acres and the map further defines seventeen lots that are less than the two point five acres. Those are shown in yellow, the others are shown in red. So in terms of the variance criteria, so the proposed density variance is not considered to be contrary... willing to comply with any and all SLDC requirements and overlay requirements to create the subdivision. The infrastructure, meaning roads, sewer, and water lines, will all be constructed in accordance with code requirements. The 8.95-acre parcel was created by the construction of New Mexico 599. In 2016, the SLDC was adopted, at which time the small lot family transfer was eliminated from the code. The applicant wishes to create these lots for the purpose of a small lot family transfer subdivision. Prior to 2016, I understand that the 1.25-acre small lots were created directly through Santa Fe County. So the creation of small lots, we believe, will serve as a very important form of affordable housing for the applicant's family. Strict compliance with the density requirements for this property would create an undue hardship on the applicant, in that the amount of usable area would be significantly limited due to the setbacks and open space requirements. The change that is sought will not be contrary to the property's sizes in the nearby vicinity, as we see that there are approximately 75% of the adjoining neighbors that are less than 2.5 acres in size. We know that the SLDC is designed to protect and promote the health, safety, and general welfare of both present and future residents in the county. And so we feel that the granting of the requested density variance meets the purpose and intent of the SLDC, as the smaller lots will provide affordable housing to many family members, therefore meeting the spirit of the SLDC. This is not a proposed subdivision that's being put forward by a developer for profit. This is for family, for them to be in close proximity to one another, and to be able to watch their families grow, age in place, and we know that's very important for our community. The second variance having to do with setback, we know that there's a 250-foot setback from New Mexico 599 right away, and so the applicant is requesting to eliminate that setback. We know that the setback is a significant amount of land, and it would take up approximately 50% of the property, which would really limit any potential subdivision that would be proposed. The distance from New Mexico 599 to the property line is approximately 18 feet, which leaves an approximate 232-foot setback on the 8.95-acre site. And so again, the applicant is requesting a variance to eliminate that setback. We feel that it's not contrary to the public interest, due to the fact that there are many structures along New Mexico 599 within the TAPCD that do not meet the 250-foot setback. Some of these structures are now within the Santa Fe city limits, which we understand, or were incorporated into the Village of Abua Fria Community District Overlay. As I've stated, strict enforcement of the SLDC Section 9.11.2.1 will reduce the potential for development on the parcel, and there doesn't seem to be any practical reason to impose this setback on the parcel of land, as there are other properties and structures along New Mexico 599 that are within the setback and are very visible from 599. In fact, the four parcels that are immediately east of this property all have structures that are within that 250-foot setback. The granting of the requested setback variance will allow the family members to live within and contribute to Santa Fe County, therefore meeting the spirit of the SLDC. The land taken by the enforcement of the 250-foot setback requirement, we can't see where it benefits the county in any specific way. I certainly understand your concerns that you brought forward about the WIP transportation in that area, and I don't know if that is part of the reasoning behind why that was established to begin with, but in terms of practicality and use of that land, it really can't be used for anything. You have 599, you have the frontage road, and then you have the parcel. So it's not, I doubt that the frontage road would ever be widened and that land would be necessary, but I can't see, I can't see any practical use that the county would have for it in terms of it. It seems like it would, if it were taken out of this one parcel and not taken out of the others, we're not quite sure how it would be utilized. So it is important to note that in March of 2020, there was another case that came before the county hearing officer and the planning commission as well, with a similar request for variance from the requirements for the 250-foot setback. There was existing property topography and drainage that were the focus of the request, but ultimately, the hearing officer and the planning commission approved the request, citing in part as one of the conclusions of law, that the request was not contrary to the public interest. The spirit of the SLDC is observed, and most importantly, that the setback is consistent with the setback of existing structures on neighboring properties. And that's a quote from the findings of fact and conclusions of law from that report. To talk about the open space requirements, I know there was also a question about whether or not we were proposing any open space. And so what we are actually proposing, we're not proposing to fully eliminate the open space requirement, but rather, we are proposing to utilize the requirements in the RESE setback to meet the required 30% open space requirements. The RESE setback required by the SLDC Table 7A is 10 feet from the front of the property line, and 25 feet from the sides and the rear of the property lines. And so these are the setbacks that we are proposing, and that is what's shown on the proposed development survey that we provided in your packet. Terms of the variance criteria that need to be met, the request is to allow the RESE setbacks to be utilized to comply with the 30% open space requirement, and we do not feel it's contrary to the public interest for that reason. Again, the proposed subdivision will be developed in accordance with all SLDC and overlay requirements as well. The granting of the variance, we feel, will allow the development to meet the open space requirements in a manner that's suitable to this property. The TAPCD requirements for subdivision do not differentiate a seven-lot subdivision from a 70-lot subdivision, and we feel that that's really important. The requirements put an undue burden on the smaller subdivisions as we are proposing, and so for that reason, we thought this might be an alternative and why we proposed it in the form of a variance request. In closing, again, just to summarize, the applicant is asking for relief from the dimensional standards set forth in the SLDC Section 9.11 setback from New Mexico 599, and SLDC Table 8-8 RESE density requirements and language within the SLDC Section 9.11, which prohibits open space within perimeter setbacks. The requested zoning density variance and setback variance would serve the purpose of maximizing a utility of a portion of land that, as an express condition of the plat's approval, would result in exceptional practical difficulties for the future owner, Mr. Gerald Solano, in order for Mr. Solano to provide each of his children and family members with a relatively equal inheritance that will serve as a form of affordable housing for the applicant's family. Mr. Solano would absolutely need the land associated with the current 250-foot setback from the frontage road. We know that affordable housing is a critical issue, not only within the county, across the city as well, and equally as important are the benefits to be gained from having a family close together. Mr. Solano and some of his family members are here today, and would also like to speak to present the benefits of the proposed subdivision for his family, and how this will provide a stable and secure environment, along with an independent home site to care for family members. It will further address the aging in place concept, and the importance of being able to have a family, community nearby for support and care. The applicant maintains that the requested variances will not have adverse effects on the general health, safety, and welfare of property owners and area residents. And so in closing, should you approve our request, we would like to ask that a couple of the staff recommendations not be imposed, one of them that prohibits the development and construction of ADUs. That would be an important one that we leave in place if at all possible. And secondly, let me find it real quickly here. The second one that we would request is that there's a provision that calls for no drilling of domestic wells. Now, even though we have the ready, willing, and able letter and permission to connect to county water and wastewater, we know that the nearest distance to those connections is, like I said, about 1,600 feet away, so we don't know if that would be cost prohibitive. And I know the code also specifies that there are certain maximum distances that you can go to connect. I think for water, it's about 290 feet, and for wastewater, I think it's approximately 100. So with that, Mr. Chair and members of the Planning Commission, we thank you for your time and consideration, and I would ask that you allow the family members to speak, and with that, I would stand for any questions.
Thank you, Commissioners. Let's have the members of the family speak before we ask questions of the agent or the So please come up and be sworn. Thank you.
My name is Gerald Solano. I live at 4443 Mission Bend in Santa Fe, New Mexico, and I have been sworn in. If you don't mind, I wrote down what I wanted to say, because I didn't want to leave anything out. So, good afternoon, Commissioners, and thank you for allowing me to speak today. My name is Gerald Solano. I stand with my wife Nora and my daughter Mariah Solano. My son Derek is the police officer back there. We are lifelong natives of Santa Fe. I'm here today on behalf of many family members seated behind me. We come today to ask for your approval in the requested variance, which would help us fulfill our dream. Our dream is to purchase the 8.95 acres of land in the Tres Arroyos subdivision and subdivide the land into parcels that would become home to me and my family members, and my kids, and my grandkids. My family who is sitting behind me, we're all born and raised in Santa Fe and spent our entire lives living in Santa Fe. Every single one of us have attended elementary school, middle school, and high school here in Santa Fe. We are public servants of the community, where the employees that keep our government running. Our family is comprised of current and retired city, county, and state employees. Together, we are the employees of the New Mexico State Land Office, New Mexico Environment Department, PERA, CYFD, Presbyterian Medical Services, Santa Fe Public Schools, and current and retired Santa Fe police officers. We serve our community in our employment, and in our free time, we spend coaching our kids in our youth and varieties of sports activities. Our family roots run deep in Santa Fe, Santa Fe community, and our goal is to keep our roots firmly implanted in Santa Fe for generations to come. As many of you know, homeownership in Santa Fe is getting increasingly difficult. The high cost of real estate in Santa Fe has pushed many locals out to neighboring cities. Far too often, our children are forced to move to Albuquerque, Rio Rancho, Bernalillo, and in doing so, local Santa Feans are forced to commute an additional two hours per day to keep their jobs here in Santa Fe. Many of them, many others are forced to leave their government jobs here in Santa Fe due to the high cost of living. So not only are we losing our youth, but we are losing our employees. More important than the economic reasons for this land purchase is the human and personal reasons. Allowing these variances to go through would allow a very close and loving family to stay together, to look after each other as we all get older. My daughter Mariah, who is, was 30 years old, was diagnosed with an incurable rare cancer in 2023. Despite her current cancer diagnosis and ongoing treatments, she still works a full-time job for the state land office here in Santa Fe, and is an accounting supervisor. Like many youth, like many young adults, she values her independent living. Her doctors are here in Santa Fe, where she receives regular immunotherapy treatments. Having to move out of Santa Fe would not only add an additional two hours of commute time for her day to work, but would also greatly affect her treatments and doctor's appointments. My wife Nora and I are both retired government employees. She retired from New Mexico Public Employees Retirement Department, and I am a retired Santa Fe police lieutenant. Our main priority is to provide a safe daycare as we can for our grandbabies, which we will be having our first one here in August. Caring for our grandbabies and our kids to pursue their careers would be impossible if they are forced to move out of Santa Fe, as we need to travel, as they would need to travel, we would need to travel out of town on a daily basis to babysit. Our vision is that one day, we live to the ripe old age that our children can care for us. Living close to each other makes much more sense for everyone. As a husband, I can be at peace, knowing that if anything was to ever happen to me, my wife and my kids will be surrounded by loved ones who live close by. While I volunteered to speak on how these variances and the land purchase will affect me and my children and the rest of the family behind me, they all have their own reasons which are just as important. When we first found out about this property, it was a dream that everything would fall into place and make this happen. Buying the property without knowing if these variants would go through would be a huge financial risk to us. Instead, we went under contract to purchase the property under the conditions that these variants are passed, and that we can split the property to fit our family's needs. To date, we have spent over $30,000 in the application process and surveys and stuff like that. We have tried to do everything by the book to meet the county's requirements, as well as to show we are good neighbors to all in the Tres Arroyos subdivision. It is important to note that in asking for these variances to be approved, that we are not asking for any special privileges that have not been already granted to other landowners in the area over the years. This is evident as the map we have provided to you in the packet as attachments. The map shows the breakdown of the lots in the subdivision. The lots marked in the red are 38 lots that are 1.25 acres in size. The lots marked in the yellow are 17 lots that are less than 2.5 acres in size. This means that 55 of the 79 lots, or 75% of the lots in this area, are less than the 2.5 acres, which is required. In addition, there are a few lots that are smaller than 1.25 acres. If approved, we would have four lots at 1.25 acres, and the remaining three lots would be 1.31 acres. Our request falls in line with other lot sizes in the area. The request of the 250-foot setback was approved in 2022 for the property, just two lots over from this property. This property does not butt up to 599. There is the frontage road that separates 599 and the property. I've heard you guys' concerns about, you know, the WIP and all that stuff, and I understand that, but we are not right up on 599. There is the frontage road. And the last... And the last thing I would want to do is put my family in harm's way, but I also do understand that, you know, you can't prevent everything. It should be noted that all the lots in this area have private wells and septic systems, many in which are twenty years old. It should be, should we be able to bring county water and sewer to our property, it would be a big benefit to the rest of the neighbors to have county services that much closer for connection should their well or septic systems fail. For these reasons, we respectfully ask that you help our dream come true by approving these variances in front of you today. Thank you for your time and your attention.
Thank you, Mr. Solano. Do any of the other folks wish to speak?
Good afternoon. Thank you, guys, for allowing me to speak. My name is Derek Solano. I'm twenty-four years old, and I have been a police officer with the City of Santa Fe for four years. I was born and raised in the city, and I've always felt proud to serve the community that raised me. My wife and I both grew up here, and we both knew this is where we wanted to build our life together. We've dreamed of finding a piece of land where we can build our home, something close to both our families, where our children can grow up near the grandparents. With both of us working full-time, it's a blessing to know our kids will be cared for by people we love and trust. We've searched for property before, but finding something that fits our needs and budget has been a real challenge. Having our parents watch our kids while we're at work will save us a significant amount of money on childcare expenses. This is where our roots are, and we want our children to grow up with the same sense of community and belonging that we did. Staying in Santa Fe means everything to us. It's more than just where we live, it's our community, our home. It's where our families have grown, our roots run deep, and where we want to build our future. Lately, many of us are being forced to consider leaving, not because we want to, but because we can't find housing that fits our lives. We don't want to have to move to Rio Rancho or Albuquerque to afford a home with enough space or find a property that matches our vision or lives. If we move to Rio Rancho, I would have to add an additional two hours of commute time to my already ten-hour workday, which would significantly impact my ability to respond to immediate emergency call-outs as a member of the emergency response team. Living in the city, I'm sorry, living in the Santa Fe community I serve allows for a faster, more effective action unlike many officers who must travel into town when emergencies arise. We don't have to spend, we don't want to have to spend hours commuting back and forth from Rio Rancho to Santa Fe, or worse, working jobs far from the community we love, simply because housing pushed us out. We're not asking for luxury, we're asking for the ability to live and work in the city we call home. Santa Fe should grow in a way that includes Santa Fe natives, not just those who can afford high-end developments. Thank you for your time and consideration in our story.
Thank you, Mr. Solano. Ms. Solano?
My name is Savannah Solano. I am twenty-five years old, and I was born and raised here in Santa Fe. After graduating from Santa Fe High School, I attended New Mexico State University, where I earned my master's degree in business administration. After meeting my now-husband, I moved back home to Santa Fe and began working with the State Land Office for two years. I now work for the City of Santa Fe as an HR analyst, too. My husband and I got married in June of twenty twenty-four, and we're now thirty-two weeks pregnant, expecting our first baby in August. It's an exciting and emotional time for us as we prepare to start our family. My husband and I both grew up here, and we're now working hard to build a future for our family in the same community that shaped us. Our dream is to purchase property near both of our parents, somewhere we can build a home and raise our kids, surrounded by family. It means the world to us that our children will be cared for by their grandparents while we're at work, and we hope to give them a childhood full of love, space to play, and a deep connection to this community. We've looked at property before, but it's been very difficult to find something that's both affordable and truly feels like home. Our vision is to build a house where our kids and dogs can run around freely and where we can stay for the long term. If we are unable to find a property and have to move to Rio Rancho, it would likely require us to find and pay for childcare near there, adding a significant unplanned expense to our budget, especially since our longstanding plan has always been to rely on our parents to care for their grandchildren while we're at work. We're committed to Santa Fe, not just because it's where we're from, but because it's where we want our children to grow. Thank you.
Thank you.
Paul Sandoval, forty-two, Cuernavaca, Santa Fe, New Mexico, eight-seven-five-oh-seven.
Thank you for letting us speak today. My name is Paul Sandoval, and this is my wife Shirley. Fortunately, my kids couldn't be here, they're working today. I've lived here for sixty years. I work for Toyota Santa Fe, where I'm the Purchased Services Director. I've been there for the last thirty-three years. We are definitely involved in the community. I have been a volunteer coach at Santa Fe High, Capital High School, for the last twenty years. My son and my son-in-law are both really involved in the local church and both help out with all the youth in Santa Fe. They're pouring, we are all pouring into the community. With all that said, I love Santa Fe, and so do, so do my kids. I want them to grow up and raise their kids here so that we can all be close to each other. But as you all know, the cost of living in Santa Fe is very expensive, and most people can't afford to stay here. My son and his wife live in Rio Rancho right now and work in Santa Fe. They both have to have young kids and have to commute, and, and my daughter and her husband rent in Santa Fe because they can't afford a house here. We aren't asking for any special privileges, just to be treated fairly like others have been in the past in the same neighborhood. So with your grace and your understanding, hopefully, we will get approved to develop the property. My hope is that all of my kids and my grandkids can live near us in this beautiful city we call home, and they can raise their kids, and we can all pitch in and serve this community like we have for the last sixty years. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
I've been sworn in. My name is Yvette Sandoval, and my address is twenty-three-sixty Brother Abdin Way, Santa Fe, New Mexico, eight-seven-five-oh-five. Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak today. Just like the others, I'm a lifelong resident of Santa Fe, deeply rooted in this community. After college, I returned home and have remained an active and contributing member ever since. We coached Little League, taught catechism, were very active at each of our schools, planned all the senior events, so it's always been important to me to be close to family. Santa Fe isn't just where I live, it's literally who I am. It's where I raised my two beautiful daughters and prayed that they would always be able to return home. When my youngest daughter returned from college, we really worried about how she might be able to stay home. As you know, affordable housing in Santa Fe is a growing challenge here. When Derek and Savannah found the property that we're looking at, it was like all of our prayers were answered. It was the opportunity for our babies and grandbabies to be able to stay home in this beautiful community. To me, this isn't just about housing, it's about staying close to my family. I'm requesting this, these variances so that I can live, live near my daughter, son-in-law, and grandchildren, and support them in any way that I can, as they also contribute to their community, working in government, coaching their teams, teaching catechism, and participating in all the activities that their children will be engaged in. This request aligns with the spirit of the community in the subdivision and won't disrupt the neighborhood, since there's already many lots, I think we heard thirty-eight, of this size. This request simply allows me to be a present grandparent and a supportive part of my family's life, just as my grandfather was for me a couple of blocks from here. I respectfully ask for your support in helping me to remain in the community I love, close to the people who matter the most. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Is anyone else here from the applicant's family? Okay. So now, Commissioners, do you have any questions of? Oh, is there anyone online from the applicant's family?
Mr. Chair, Commission members, we do have Angelica Sanchez online wishing to speak.
Is, is she a, is she part of the applicant's group? Because I think we haven't entered the public hearing yet.
No, she's part of the, part of the public.
Okay, so, so let's just hold off. Commissioners, would you like to ask any questions of the agent or any of the applicants? Commissioner Bruger?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, first question would be for Ms. Martinez, if you would. Thank you for your presentation. That's good. The, so question on, so the current owner is Mr. Waddes?
Mr. Chair and members of the Planning Commission, Commissioner Bruger, that's correct.
When did he buy the property?
That's a good question. I'm not sure that I have an answer to that.
I thought I saw something in the file that he bought it from the state. But I, if, I may or may not be correct, but what I saw something in the file that it was like twenty-twenty. And the reason, the reason I'm asking is that if it was after the code had been approved, then that's one thing, that one would have an idea what one may be getting into as far as density and requirements. And so, so I can't ask whether, I could ask, whether is, was he aware of the requirements when he acquired the property? Or he may not know.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Bruger, I'm not sure if he was aware of the requirements, but I do know then that in twenty twenty-two, he did go before the TAC with a similar request. He had density and a few other items that he was requesting at that point in time. So he must have known in twenty twenty-two how soon prior to that he purchased the property and whether or not he was aware. I, I don't have an answer to that.
Thank you. And did that case in twenty twenty-two, did that, did that come before Planning Commission? Or what happened with that?
I don't believe it made it as far as Planning Commission. I think it went before the TAC, and they got the ready, willing, and able letter of approval. Beyond that, staff may know more about that than, than I do.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Bruger, I have no record on, on those issues.
And Commissioner Bruger, I believe you're correct. I read in the exhibit title, "Quit Claimed Deed," that, that he acquired the property in twenty twenty. Thank you. Any other questions? Commissioner Bruger, or Commissioner Meyer?
Okay. The next question for Mr. Solano, if I may. So you have a contract to purchase the property from Mr. Waddes?
Yes, sir.
And you haven't closed on the property yet, have you not? Or you have conditions that must be met prior to when you close? And one of the big conditions, I would suspect, would be these variance requests.
No, sir. When we first learned of the property, we, we knew that we were going to be requesting a variance in the lot split. So that's when we went under contract with him, and we found out that that there was a two hundred and fifty-foot setback on there. So that brought up another issue that, so we were very hesitant to purchase the property because of this on there. So of course, he wanted to sell the property. We entered into a contract with him that we would give him ten thousand dollars down as a retainer fee, whatever you call it, down, down payment. Well, as long as he would hold the property, as, as long as we went through this process, we didn't think it was going to take, it's been almost a year that, that we've been going through the process, and we didn't think it would take that long. The ten thousand dollars that we did give him was with the condition that if, if it doesn't go through, we forfeit the money. So that's one of the conditions. And then we've also put, like I said, about thirty thousand dollars into, into surveys and different things that we've had to do to try to get to this point where we're at now. So, so all in all, we'd probably be at about forty thousand dollars if it didn't go through.
I may, one, one more question for now. It could be either to you or Ms. Martinez, but why, why seven lots?
Well, because we have our, our kids here, and we were originally going to do it for five lots, and we were told that if we, if it was to be approved, that we wouldn't be able to split it anymore after that. So we were advised that if, if we were gonna, if we were gonna do it, we should do it for what we were planning for the long term, and the seven lots is what we would need long-term. Some of them, some of our, our kids aren't able to build right now, but we're hoping within the next five years that they will. But we also understood that in five years, we wouldn't be able to come back and ask to split, split a two-point-five acre lot into one point two-five acres. So that's why we're trying to do it all today.
Thank you. Commissioner Meyer?
Yeah, this is for the agent, Ms. Martinez. So you were talking about the sewer and the freshwater from the county, and you were saying it was quite a ways away. Can you go over that just a little bit more? How far are those, the hookups for the water and the sewer compared to where the lots are at?
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Meyer, I hope I'm pronouncing that correctly. Yes, we, we understand that the, that the lines are, one of the lines is approximately sixteen hundred and twenty feet away from the parcel. And so I'm not completely familiar with how the county deals with that. Like I said, we know there's a provision in the code that says that you have to connect within two hundred and ninety feet for the water. So I'm not sure how the rest of it gets addressed. We know that some of the adjacent property owners, there's a gentleman named Matthew Baca, and he has, he has a water line coming through his, through his property, and that's where the connection would come from. But we don't know if it's, if it's straight across the property connection where an easement would have to be created, or if the water lines would be moved to follow actual property lines. We'd have to work with Santa Fe Utilities to try to figure out what the best route for that is.
And have you spoken to them?
We have, we have. And so, like I said, we, we did get the approval, the ready, willing, and able letter, and so they're willing to give us those services is just a matter of if, if the variances in the subdivision gets approved, working with them directly to figure out what the best route is for those connections for water and wastewater both.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from Commissioners? Commissioner La Cruz Crawford?
I guess I have some just general comments that might lead into questions as well. First and foremost, I just want to mention to the family here that, you know, just want to give respect for your involvement in the community and also for the fact that you're actually trying to create essentially like a family compound. I think that's actually really awesome, you know? I could see how it'd be totally beneficial for you guys and for your kids and, and your future, so I definitely respect that. The other comments, I guess, I would say is that I feel like this particular property that you found seems like there's a lot of uphill battle for this particular property because of all these setbacks, there's, or sorry, because of all these variances that you're requesting, right? You're dealing with a zoning density request, a two hundred and fifty-foot request, which appears to be some sort of, which appears to be, I mean, somewhat of a safety concern, like the commissioner mentioned as well, you know? There is a portion of There is a portion of the code that says that if a particular property, it cannot be used because of that 250-foot setback, that the, I think the back 30% of it is allowed to be developed. So there's some provisions of the code that allow you to use a lot like that, um, for that reason. There's also the, oh, the open space scenario. But I guess for me, I feel like you've got the density scenario, the, the setback scenario that's kind of against you. And there's also some financial implications that I'm hearing as well with respect to utilities. The fact that, just mentioned here, Commissioner, as far as like utilities being far away, that could be a pretty costly scenario for you guys to be able to build, develop that property. In particular, if we go forward with staff's recommendation of not allowing any wells, which I would actually be, um, definitely, um, in agreement with. I live in La Cienega and we deal with a lot of water issues. I'm in Myurdomo of Mausakia, and really, any wells are pretty detrimental. They could just use up our water. And so I do think that, you know, connection to, uh, local utilities would be warranted for anything like this, uh, certainly, uh, preferred, you know? Uh, what are the other things that I was thinking of here? I guess I was also curious, I'll ask this as an actual question then, um, to the applicant. What other properties have you looked at, you know? Cause I know there's other vacant lot, lots available, um, just through a look, quick search on Zillow, you know? But I know you guys are looking at this particular one, so.
Right, additionally, when we first started this, uh, my son and his fiance, or his wife, his fiance at the time, were, were looking for a lot, uh, preferably a 2.2 and 1/2 acre lot. So I was helping him look for 2 and 1/2 acre lots, and that's when we came across this property. We had looked, uh, out towards Buttockers and a couple of other areas. But as you know, it, with the 2.5 acre lot, even if they were to find one in Santa Fe, um, you know, uh, they'd, they'd be on their own to develop a well, which can be pretty expensive. As well as 2 and 1/2 acres, most of these lots are, are like 2 and 1/2 acres or big lots, and it's very, very expensive. So when we found this one, um, you know, my daughter is also looking for a lot, uh, hopefully at one point. And, uh, and I talked it over with my wife, and then that's when we, we thought, if we can buy this lot and, and split it and help our children, um, then that would be the perfect scenario for all of us, and that's why we've, we've, um, pursued it.
Okay. Couple of the quick comments is, I noticed that at least in this particular overlay zoning district, what it, what it mentions as far as the purpose for the rest E here on the code, it says it's to preserve the rural character of the community for single-family development, option for clustering, agricultural-related uses, lower, medium impact home pack applications of businesses. So obviously, when this overlay was done, the intent, you know, obviously before it was 1.5s, you could do that, but the intent now, since 2016, has been to kind of create these 2.5 acre lot scenarios, you know? Another question is, so with this, my understanding, it's a 7.9 something. I did the math, but I think, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, staff here, but I am looking at current code scenario at the 2.5 acres. It's like, math is like 3.5, so we're dealing with three lots that it would be able to be divided, subdivided into legally?
Mr. Chair, Planning Commission members, yes, that is correct. Um, by code, it would be allowed three lots by subdivision.
And by code, with those three lots, you're allowed to have an accessory dwelling unit. That's a, that's, you know, approved for the zoning, uh, scenario as well. So you could technically have three lots, have a main residence, and also build an accessory dwelling unit, essentially still have six residences for your, for your family potentially. And that's what would be my, would, one concern with at least the fact that, uh, I believe your agent mentioned that they would not want to take staff's recommendation of no ADUs. Um, because obviously, if we do approve this to be a 1.25 acre scenario where you're allowed to have seven lots, you know, you could have seven single-family residences. And if we don't approve that particular staff recommendation, that means you could technically have 14 homes here with a single family and an accessory dwelling unit in that particular lot. So that also concerns me as well, cause that's a lot of, lot of development, even if it's for a family compound, um, that's a lot of water use. And actually, for even for you guys, that's a lot of expense as far as, you know, construction costs are concerned. So things to just consider on your own as well, as far as the purchasing of this lot on your end.
I understand that, and our intention is not for accessory dwellings. If that's a deal breaker, we could do away with the accessory dwellings. That's not, we, we don't wanna just openly forfeit that, but that's not any of our intentions. So if, if that's the deal breaker, then we'd, we'd be willing to, we'd agree to no accessory dwelling structures. As far as the three lots, um, the issue with that is, that means that three people would end up, uh, paying for the lot, which that would be out of the price range for my kids, you know? At a, at a 1.25 acre lot, they can afford something like that. At a 2.5 acre lot, they wouldn't be able to, and they're still gonna have to put the water resources and the plumbing and, and everything else that, that comes along with it. And it's split, instead of spreading it out seven ways, it would have to be paid for by three, by three people. And I don't, and I'd also have to cut out some of my family members, which I, which I didn't wanna do. Um, it's hard to do something like this and then decide who you're gonna allow and who you're not gonna allow. So tho- those are the concerns that we have. I mean, I understand what you're saying, but if you look at the, the plot that, that we provided with the red dots on there and the yellow dots, um, you know, a lot of the lots in there are 1.25 acres. And, and I understand that they changed the rules in 2016, and that's why we, we decided to, to come before you before purchasing it, um, to try to get this clarified.
And I think that's a, I think you're doing the right thing, for sure, by coming forward here and trying to request a variance, as well, that's processes in place, right? To be able to have your say and be able to request it, um, you know? And, uh, on our end, as commissioners, or at least on my end, as far as I'm concerned, I, I have to look at it as these kind of requests, right? Are you meeting these requirements, you know, contrary to public interest? You know, are there any extraordinary or exceptional situations or conditional property? I don't quite see like a hardship necessarily there. But, um, and, and your agent can respond to that as well.
One more thing that I'd just like to add is, Mr. Wadis, who owns this piece of property, also owned, uh, a property similar in size right across the highway on 599 next to Camino Real. And, um, we had approached him to buy this piece of property. He had previously sold that property to the, to a developer, Camino Real, and they built probably 25 houses in that, in that area. But at the time, they wanted to finish that subdivision before moving this way. And, um, so that's why we made the offer to him, gave him money down that we would eventually lose, to give us the chance to come in front of you to present our case. But I also know that if, if we are denied, they'll probably sell it to the developer with a lot more money, and they'll be, they'll build 25 houses instead of just seven, you know?
No, I appreciate that. Like I said, I, I really appreciate your family and, and your being here. Um, I do think sometimes it's unfortunate, these overlay districts. I mean, I don't necessarily agree with all the restrictions personally for certain overlay districts, but they are just, they're there, and the community has established them, you know? But I hear you, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Bruger?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a comment. Compelling testimony. Wish my kids could live here. They're in Rio Rancho in Moriarty. The, uh, uh, the, I think there was one of the presentations, uh, that, hmm, gentleman mentioned that you weren't requesting or asking for anything, you know, special or, I mean, special, you know? You know, special disposition. I wish that were the case, but this is a variance request. And just two things to point out. The, uh, I mean, most of you sat in on, uh, um, the community planning presentation earlier, where, you know, where that ends up is in an overlay district. There's a planning committee, a bunch of people from the, from the area participate in the committee. Then they create a plan, they create a overlay district, and that's, that's what happened with this. So it's, it's not like the co, the staff just came up with a code. It's the result of a lot of people who put in a lot of time, and this is the code that we're, you know, sitting up here, we're supposed to follow. Second comment is, uh, it's, it's hard for us, the setback request, uh, it's hard, even, even when you go, if, 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 if the, this overlay district that you're subject to, uh, this property was disregarded and you went to, uh, the basic code, there's a, a section 7.333, highway setbacks, uh, that state, unless established through a right-of-way, all development shall be set back at least 150 feet from the road pavement of a federal highway and 100 feet from a highway, major arterial or railroad. This, the old whip route would qualify. So we're not even talking 100, we're talking 25. So, uh, it's a, it's a tough one, and that concludes my comments.
Thanks very much. Any other questions from commissioners of the applicant or agent? Hearing none. Uh, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the room or online who is interested in speaking in support or opposition? If so, please come forward, be sworn. Thank you very much.
Yes. Gilte R. Seto, 7B North Horizon Lane, Santa Fe, New Mexico, 87507. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity. I, uh, can you hear me okay? I stand here in, in support of this project. Uh, I met, uh, Mr. Solano and his wife about two weeks ago. And, uh, they shared their story with me, their, their desire for their family, the sacrifice that they're making to, uh, allow their families to, to live together, to help each other out in times of need. And, uh, I've been in the same situation myself. Fortunately, I was able to, uh, split a 2 and 1/2 acre lot into two, 1.25 because of the family transfer provisions of the code. I can't believe that the county allowed a local development plan to, to remove such an important aspect of the county code as the family transfer provisions. I, uh, to me, it was unheard of. And when I was land use administrator for Santa Fe County back in the early 80s, when the first land use development code was adopted, the family transfer provisions in that were so important to the county and the cultural, the, the heritage of our community and the practice of parents being able to give land to their kids so that they could stay here and build a family. And to see that one local community can, can wipe that out is, is astonishing to me. But that's neither here nor there. Uh, the fact that Mr. Solano is willing to invest the money to bring public water and sewer, that's also a very important issue to, to our area in that we're all depending on wells and septic systems, and those things tend to fail over time. The, the neighbor that I have to my east is immediately adjacent to this project. I am immediately adjacent to this project, and we both support what this applicant is attempting to do. And I just stand for questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I just wanna be clear and just ask questions of staff. I believe that the speaker indicated that it's the community overlay district that is limiting things to 2 and 1/2, but it's, it's the underlying zoning. Isn't that, that correct?
Mr. Chair, um, whenever you're in a 2 and 1/2 acre par, uh, overlay or within regular county jurisdictions, not within a overlay, 2 and 1/2 is the minimum lot size. The 2 and 1/2 acres, back in, before 2016, we found that a lot of the small lot family transfers of 1 and 1/4 acre were being, um, extorted or taken advantage of. And a lot of people would come in and do 5 acres into 2, into the 1 and 1/4s. And then you'd end up with a serial subdivision where there were 10 acres, and they would do the same. And they were utilizing family transfers as, as a provision to do so.
Essentially developing subdivisions.
Serial sub, yeah. And so we didn't have proper access, we didn't have proper water sources, we didn't have proper fire protection to access these sites. That was a major issue for the change in the ordinance, and that's why they started allowing, um, ADUs as a provision to that standard.
Thank you very much, and thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Any other, um, interested parties online or?
Mr. Chair, Planning Commission members, we do have Angelica Sanchez online wishing to speak.
Okay, uh, if you could unmute and, um, turn your camera on if you have one.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Angelica Sanchez. Um, my questions that I had concerning the subdivision or this proposal have been answered through further discussion. I was, um, concerned about the ADUs, which would make it the 14 on that property, also with the setback of the 250. But through the discussion, I think I've got the answers.
Thank you, ma'am. So no further questions?
No.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I cannot see any other hands up. So with that, let's close the public.
Mr. Mr. Chair, um, a second hand just went up, a Jay Kennedy is wishing to speak on this matter.
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, you need to be sworn.
Ms. Kennedy, can you hear me?
Mr. Kennedy or Ms. Kennedy, would you please unmute and speak?
Is Zoom still operational? I seem to have lost the screen.
It's working on our end.
They've lowered their hand. It doesn't seem like their audio might not be working, or their microphone might not be working, but they've lowered their hand.
Okay, thank you very much. So with that, let's close the public hearing portion. And commissioners, any questions of staff or any discussion? Commissioner Pava?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a few questions for staff, uh, before we entertain any kind of motions. The first question would be, um, regarding the structure of the case presented to us. There's three separate variances, albeit related. Are we making, when a motion is made, pro or con, are we making one motion to cover all three variances? Or are we making motions for each variance, although some are dependent on others for the case?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Member Pava and the rest of the commissioners, I think it would be appropriate to make a motion on each individual for clarity.
Thank you. I thought so as well. Thank you, I thought so as well. The issue of housing types comes up in the record that I read through prior to the case. There were comments about, or concerns during neighborhood meetings and during zoning hearing meetings about the types of housings. I think manufactured housing, it may have been referred to as mobile homes, but I think we're talking about manufactured housing. Is it permitted so and so on, on these parcels, whether they're seven parcels or three parcels or one parcel? What, what is the county code, what is the code state as regards manufactured housing on lots in this, this district?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Member Pava. Santa Fe does, Santa Fe County does not discriminate on the type of home you may place on your property. However, we do make aware to potential buyers or applicants that there could be private covenants, which they can be held in litigation on. So that's basically what Santa Fe County stance is. They must pass HUD Housing Urban Development requirements. They also have to pass state manufacturing requirements.
Thank you, Mr. Lovato. A follow-on question, there was some discussion about maybe subdividing with fewer lots, maybe three lots and then having three accessory dwellings, which gives you six houses, basically. And we're talking about maybe between five and seven being desired. So here's my question. Let's say we divided this into three lots, each lot is about two and a half acres. How large of a main house could be built on, on, on a two and a half acre lot in this, with the zoning currently? And that would cue me into a little bit to the size of an accessory dwelling unit.
Mr. Chair, Planning Commission Member Pava, there would be no restriction on the size of a residential house. They would just have to make sure that they meeting all setbacks, all open space requirements, you know, avoiding easements, such like that. But there's no restriction on the size of a primary residence that they would be able to build on the, on these lots.
And does the county, following up either for Mr. Cisneros or Mr. Lovato, does the county code define a family specifically that would preclude more, preclude certain associations of people living in a large house in this zoning district? Could there be a big house and there could be like an extended family in the house? The code doesn't get into that, does it?
No, not necessarily. What staff would look for on the size, you know, when, when a permit would come through is number of kitchens and access. If there are multiple kitchens and access seems to be closed off and access would only be obtainable through, you know, the exterior, we would look at that as two separate dwellings. If access was open, there was common spaces, and it was open and able to flow through and there was two kitchens, we would still possibly consider that as one residence.
Okay, that's helpful, knowing about that and families and kitchens and whatnot. There was a letter that we were handed just before the, the hearing, signed by several people. It seems to be in opposition. But my primary focus here is about dates and two different hearings and whether, I guess the bottom line is, can we state for the record, in fact, that for this public hearing tonight, that the notification requirements were met per code?
Mr. Chair, Planning Commission Pava, that is correct. So the applicant and their agent had missed noticing, and so they had to renotice. But they have met all notice requirements for this hearing and for the prior hearing officer meeting.
Okay. You know, having heard the testimony, I'll just make a statement here. Having heard the, the testimony and respectfully to what's going on here, having been a planner myself for 40 years, there is an acute problem in not only Santa Fe, but the country. What, what we have heard tonight should, as, as we begin to reassess and redevelop our land use codes, as I understand, may, may get funded to do, we need to consider some of these situations because this isn't the first one we've heard and it won't be the last. And honestly, I agree very clearly with Commissioner La Cruz Crawford that we have to go by the book here to some degree. But the reason we're on the Planning Commission is also to use some, to be judicious. Now, of course, I understand this is quasi judicial and the results of this, of our vote could be appealed to the county commission. Is that correct?
Mr. Chair, Planning Commission Pava, that is correct. A decision here, either approval or denial, can be appealed onto the Board of County Commissioners as a de novo case and start over for either approval or denial by the Board of County Commissioners.
Yeah, thank you, I appreciate knowing, and I'm sure the applicant and agent understand that that's a possibility. This is a real difficult situation. I think all my fellow commissioners feel somewhat like I do, very conflicted about this. These are real problems, social problems. And as the former director for the county many years ago had pointed out, there is a valid place and time and place for this family land transfer, and, and there were abuses. We've got to figure out some way to allow the culture of, of our community, whether we came here last week or 40 years ago, as I did, or some families 400 years ago. We need to figure this out because we're going by the book and we're trying to do the right things. But this variance case just, just highlights the problems that we are facing with affordable housing. So I just want to leave it at that for the record.
Commissioner, I just, I wanted to mention something. I'm a little bit concerned about splitting up the different parts of the variance request, not understanding what the real estate transaction deals are. If we were to prove one portion, but not the other portion, that made the project undoable, that might really put Mr. Solano under the gun contractually. So I, I believe that, you know, straight up, up or down on all of the variance requests at the same time will not put Mr. Solano at risk. Because I haven't seen their contract and really don't wish to. That's just a comment I had. Any other comments from Commissioners?
Mr. Chair, it would be appropriate to vote on all three as well.
All, all three at once? That would work? Great, thank you. Any other comments? Commissioner Meyer?
Yeah, I guess I just have one statement. It, it seems like even if we approved it based on the staff's recommendations and the one issue that I brought up earlier was no drilling of domestic wells shall be allowed. If we somehow approve this and they can't get water service or sewer service to their lots, this approval wouldn't really mean a whole lot. So I don't know what to do about that, but I just thought I'd bring that to everyone's attention to think about that as we consider how we vote on this issue. So that's all I have.
Commissioner?
Question for the staff, because, so since 2016, I don't think anybody asked this, but, or maybe they did and I missed it, but have there any variances been requested at this, at this overlay zone for a 1.25 or a density variance? And have they been approved?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner De La Cruz, that I'm not aware of any that have come forward.
And I, I think, you know, like, when I'm kind of thinking about this, right, I was, I was asking a question as far as like the splitting of lots, whether you can get away with three, you know, the 2.5 acres. You know, there was already a question as far as like your square footage, how much could you build? Because yeah, realistically, you could build like, you know, 3,000 square foot home and still build a 1,500 square foot ADU, which a 15 square foot home is, is a large home anyway, right? That would certainly be able to probably, you know, be enough for your families to live in. I think maybe the issue more so for you guys is, you know, being able to pass that land on, right, to your kids and so forth. Because if you only have three acres of land, you know, how are you going to subdivide? Who are you going to pass it to versus having seven, you know? So I do get that too. I Yeah, I guess my last comment, I would say, just from my own ears, like, I feel like heartwise, as far as, you know, common sense wise. Well, actually, before I say that, I guess another question real quick with staff because I'm kind of curious about this, because you did mention the abuse of the subdivisions, right, to the 1.25 scenario. And I'm here with the Commissioner too, because I mean, this is an issue that should be addressed in some way, right? Because we live, you know, New Mexicans, that's why we have the ADU scenario. We're able to like, you know, provide a family for our abuelitas or other family members, et cetera, and stuff. So that's why it's there, right? But could you speak a little bit further on just kind of that abuse? And has the change since 2016 improved that in, in any way as far as the county is concerned?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner De La Cruz, it has changed. We do not see a lot of serial subdivisions. We do have a provision in our ordinance that prohibits them and holds them liable for doing so. As far as minimum lot size, we've stuck to what the code states. We've kept it at two and a half, whether it's a 10 and a half acre minimum, whatever it be, we usually stick to that. The only time I see them, any properties go below density is when they do, do a geohydrologic test and prove adequate water for 100 years. But there's a lot of studies, reports and assessments, so on and so forth, that go along with those provisions.
Okay, thank you. And I guess that was my, my last comment I was going to say before I asked the, the previous question. It's just that, yeah, as far as I'm concerned, my heart and common sense says, hey, you know, what you guys are doing is great. You guys are trying to do something for your family. The fact that you would probably use this land for that purpose, I believe you guys, you know, and that you're not necessarily trying to abuse, you know, the, the potential of, you know, subdividing it, you know, et cetera, like, like staff mentioned, that's been kind of abused in the past. So my heart goes out to you, man. And I also just have to look at this in light of, like I said, these kind of provisions that are in place and what does it mean? Are we doing this just kind of, you know, are we being, is there any kind of favoritism? You know, with respect to approving or disapproving this, et cetera. And this is a hard one, like Commissioner Pava mentioned. I find this one really difficult and I have to kind of think it over in my head because one part of me, you know, is there's opposing views in my own head as far as like how to go about this because of X, Y, and Z. So just want to put that out there, a feel for you guys.
Thanks, Commissioner. Any other Commissioners have questions or comments? What's the will of the Commission? Commissioner Bruger?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. With your permission, I'd make a motion to, regarding case 25-5010, to deny the variance request enabling seven lots on this 8.95 acre, 9.4 acre parcel, and to deny the variance of the setback from 250 feet to 25 feet, and to deny the open space variance request.
Thank you, Commissioners. Is there a second to that motion?
I guess I would second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion for denial of all variance requests and a second. May we have a roll call vote, please? So, so correct me if I'm wrong, but a yes is for denial. Is that right? Thank you.
No. Yes.
No.
A yes.
Yes. The, the variance requests have been denied and?
Mr. Chair, before you go further, you need a majority of four of the seven members. So therefore the motion dies.
So four of the seven, the motion dies. Okay, so what are our, let's see, the lawyer's playing tennis. So so it comes back, we make a, a motion for, so in order for this, in order for a decision to be made, there needs to be a motion for approval that fails. Is that correct?
Before you come back, you need four of the seven members to vote either yes or no for the approvals or denial.
So we are high centered, we basically, what, what's the procedure?
Mr. Chair, I believe it would be tabling and coming back before the seven members.
Okay, and?
Or the other option was reinstate another motion and vote once again.
So if we, so if we table and bring this up with more members present, what, is the other members read the record? What, or do we do this rodeo all over again?
I believe you would need to, to start all over again.
Start all over again.
So the other members have the opportunity to hear the case.
Got it. And so that's one option. The other option is to make another motion that gets four votes one way or the other. Is that, am I stating that correctly?
Mr. Chair, Planning Commission Members, yes, that is correct.
So what are our, let's see. I, I believe we've discussed, we've, we've discussed many of these, a number of the issues that have been brought forth. And I'm just trying to find out what, if there are any, if there's any interest in a Planning Commission member making a different motion? Or is everyone pretty clear on? I guess the real question is, is that your final answer? No, I'm sorry, I just, I, I don't see, I don't see, it, it seems fruitless to me to try and revote this because folks were clear in their votes. There was no wiggling, so.
Mr. Chair, before you go any further, let us look at the actual factual evidence that we have in our ordinance. If you don't mind.
Are we doing, up there?
We're, we're doing the research.
Okay, got it. So let's please hold. And where would I find that to maybe I can raise you for it? Where, where are you guys looking?
Mr. Chair, I'm looking in chapter 3.3.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
So, let's go into recess, and then we'll call back, in case anyone needs to use the facilities. So we're now in recess. Thank you. Commissioner?
Mr. Chair, just to make sure everybody understands, so the motion for denial failed. So, and we'll come back next month and run it back.
Yes, and we're not really sure about how to, what the specific mechanics will be, but it'll be next month, on the 17th of July at 4:00 p.m. So we have a motion and a second. May we get a roll call vote? Yes. 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 Sorry for the delay and confusion, and the lesson here is never let the attorneys leave the room early. So, what's next on the agenda? Are there any petitions from the floor? Thank you all, and sorry for the confusion. We appreciate your participation. Any matters from the commission? Commissioner Pava?
Yes, in reviewing the agenda, when I go to the homepage for Planning Commission, I know you've got a lot on your plates, but it needs to get updated with who are currently on the, who the commissioners currently are, and of course, we still have a now departed staff member as the point of contact. So, just, I noticed it, and if members of the public notice it, I mean, I know, but others wouldn't. So, could pay some heed to that.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Pava. Any other matters from the commissioners? Matters from staff?
No additional matters from staff.
Okay, thank you all. Appreciate your attendance, and we will see you on July 17th, no later than 4:00 p.m. Thanks so much. Motion to adjourn? A move to adjourn? Okay, we're adjourned. Everybody?